Good evening. Good evening, everyone. The time has come for Monday, June 16th, 2025, regular council meeting.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
With that being said, can we ask Pastor Tiffany Peppers to lead us in a invocation? And immediately following that, we'll be Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we thank you for the privilege to serve in this great city. We thank you that you have equipped and empowered each of us with our own skills and capabilities to help Waukegan be the thriving, vibrant, diverse community it is meant to be. As we gather here today, we ask for your guidance and your help stewarding what you have made us overseers of. Give us ears to hear the cries of those in our city that are suffering or afraid. Give us eyes to see where compassion is needed as well as judgment. Help us to have wisdom in making decisions because many of those decisions will outlive us. And above all, help us to be unified in our purpose. Let us remember that we are called to be the voice of our community so that when we speak, we don't just speak for our own benefit, but we speak knowing that we answer not just to voters, but we answer to you. I pray a blessing on the mayor of Waukegan and each and every member of the council because they are the representatives of us all. And as they are successful, we will be successful. May this council operate in integrity, a spirit of unity, and the humility of knowing they are the voices for Waukegan. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, Mayor's Comments. Juneteenth Parade, Saturday, June 21st. We will all be, I'm asking all to join us. Lineup time is at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Step-off time will be from 1:00 a.m., rain or shine. Start location is Waukegan High School, which is Washington Campus. That'd be Washington Street and Jackson would be the starting place. The formal address is 1011 Washington Street. The route would be traveling east via Washington Street. End location would be downtown Waukegan. It's going to be roughly a mile. The city is number eight. Aldermen elected officials can talk with David Motley if they want to participate. And I trust and hope that everyone will be out for the Juneteenth Parade. Juneteenth Festival starts on Saturday, June 21st. It will start at 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Again, rain or shine. Be between Madison and Washington on Genesee. Again, Madison and Washington on Genesee. Roughly address is 214 Washington Street. The American Independence Parade will be Sunday, June 29th. Lineup time is at 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Step-off time will be at 1:00 p.m. Starting location Franklin and Sheridan. The route is north on Sheridan Road from Franklin Street to Jack Benny Drive. City is near the front in Alderman. We're all going to march together, if that's okay. So lineup again at that Franklin and Sheridan starting point. Fourth of July fireworks will be Friday, July the 4th. Going to roughly start about 9:30 p.m. Obviously, some of us have already started our Fourth of July fireworks throughout the city. I'm just going to touch on that a little bit because I know that's very sensitive to all of the Aldermen here. We're asking neighbors, those who are participating in the unlicensed, unregulated fireworks. Alderman Turner says illegal and technically in the state of Illinois, they are illegal. Unfortunately, I don't know if we can stop everybody. What I will say to you is though, be mindful, be mindful of your neighbors. At a certain time, it is time to cut them off. And I know myself, the mayor's office, I'm pretty sure all of you have received calls about fireworks. Now, I'm just telling you from my own personal experience as a former Alderman and as a mayor, you're not, they're not going to stop. They're not going to stop using these fireworks out there. But gosh darn it, we're certainly going to be aggressive with you. And you go past 10, 11 o'clock disturbing the neighbors, you're going to have a problem with us. And we're going to be aggressive. And we're going to be asking, give me an address. We're going to knock on the door. And if we, Chief, where's the corporate counsel? If there's some evidence around, we're going to be issuing tickets. I know we're not going to stop these fireworks. I know that. But geez, at the 12 o'clock, how much can you, how much, how much do you have? So I just ask that you be mindful, just mindful of your neighbors. I don't know if there's any, if we can go back. I know I used to have my little fireworks every now and then, but gee, after 10, 11 o'clock at night, I just didn't understand. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to put that out there. The official fireworks though will be July the 4th, about around 9:30. I think we had one of the best shows in Lake County. Don't miss it. Get there early for the beach because it's going to be packed. IDOT, 2424, 2024 Local Project Funding Application. The city of Waukegan's Engineering Department submitted 17 project applications for the IDOT Illinois Department of Transportation 2024 Local Project Funding Calls for Projects. Total funding amount requested $25,511. This program provides state funding for local transportation priorities. A notice of funding opportunity is open for solicitation of local transportation initiatives that most align with the intent of the legislation pursuant goals related to enhancing mobility, local assets pursuant to complete street initiatives, and improve safety. Hey Sues, thank you very much. He worked on this extremely hard. We received this from State Representative Mayfield and State Senator Adrian Johnson. And hey Sues, as you already know, have updated the 2018 CIP. I think you were on the 2024 to 2029 CIP. So we have all of these projects that we want to get funded already ready so we're able to submit. Good job on that one. And I have one more David just gave me. David, I know you just handed it to me. And I just lost it. Ah, here it is. I apologize. Thank you. The Waukegan Band will host their first concert tomorrow night at 7:30 p.m. at the Steiner Pavilion at the Waukegan Municipal Beach. Listen, we got the best band in the county, all right? Please go, please have an opportunity with you and your family. Supposed to be real, what's the temperature supposed to be around 80, 80, 85? It's probably about 75 at our beach. It's a great time out there. Other than that, that's all that I have at this time. Item, item number two, Resolutions, Proclamation, Presentations. So items two, A, B, and C, and D. We can go for a voice, a voice vote, voice vote. Proclamation, June 19th is Juneteenth in Waukegan. And that's a proclamation. Proclamation, June is Gun Violence Awareness Month in Waukegan. Item C, Proclamation, Recognizing the 50th Anniversary of the Ann M. Kylie Developmental Center. And item D, Proclamation, Recognizing the Waukegan Police Department's Support of Special Olympics. So we're going to do a voice vote, a voice vote. We do not need a voice, a vote count, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any questions? Comments? Can I get a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Hayes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Now, the Madam Clerk will read the proclamation in order, starting with June 19th is June, Juneteenth in Waukegan.
Proclamation, June 19th is Juneteenth in Waukegan. Whereas the United States is made up of people from every nation who are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then thenceforward and forever free, and paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States and emancipating nearly four million African Americans held as slaves. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed by two and one-half years to June 19, 1865, in reaching authorities and enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas, leading to the naming and celebration of Juneteenth. And whereas the city of Waukegan celebrates our diversity and unity by taking part in and promoting Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, Black Independence Day, Jubilee Day, and Freedom Day. And whereas the city of Waukegan realizes the weight of Juneteenth and pledges to continue the work of equity and justice while recognizing the human capacity for healing and hope across our community and beyond. And whereas Juneteenth, June 19th, 2025, is recognized as both a state and federal holiday, and the Lake County Juneteenth Parade and Festival, coordinated by the African American Museum at England Manor in Waukegan, will take place in downtown Waukegan at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, with a celebration festival immediately following the parade. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth to recognize the historic and ongoing contributions of African Americans in our city and beyond, and encourage all residents to respect and honor our diverse community, help eradicate systemic racism, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness. Adopted the 16th day of June, 2025. Is someone here? Nope, nope. We'll have to give that to Ms. Sylvia England then.
The day of, the day of there.
Yep. Thank you so much. Okay, the next proclamation is June is Gun Violence Awareness Month in Waukegan. Whereas gun violence is a significant public health crisis in the United States, causing immense pain and suffering for individuals, families, and communities. Whereas the ongoing epidemic of gun violence requires a collective effort to address the root causes and find effective solutions. And whereas we recognize the importance of honoring the lives lost to gun violence and standing in solidarity with survivors and their families. And whereas June has been designated as Gun Violence Awareness Month to raise awareness, promote prevention, and advocate for change. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Gun Violence Awareness Month and encourage all residents, businesses, organizations, and government entities to join in this effort by raising awareness, supporting prevention efforts, honoring the lives lost, and collaborating with community organizations and government agencies to find solutions that make our city, town, county safer for all. Adopted the 16th day of June, 2025. Okay, sir. I believe the.
Chief, chief, you want to.
Picking that up for.
We're picking this up for the chief.
Well, this is the first time the mayor had to talk about this issue. Chief, you're, you're going to be the man on this one. Want to talk about.
Would you like this, sir?
So I'm going to just really, I'll let the chief really discuss this right here. Chief, here you go, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, and thank you, citizens of the community. You know, our officers have been working very hard and diligently on what the priorities, one of the main priorities of this community, which is gun violence. And it's not just about arresting people, right? It's also taking guns off the street. But it's about also educating our public, working with other organizations that we all feel have a greater impact on where our, I'm sorry, our outcome of our, I'm sorry, our current diligent efforts of these officers come from. So we, our officers, not only through their dedication, but through what they're doing for this community, understanding the priorities, as I said, of this community, but also the efforts that are put in by people that we talk to every single day, by the organizations that we're involved with every single day, that do care, that care about Waukegan, that care about what happens on the streets in Waukegan, that want to feel safer when they go to the grocery stores, feel safer when they're out playing with their children, feel safer when they're in their environment and enjoying themselves with their families. And I tell you, it's making a difference. It reflects in our stats. Our stats currently show and reflect a decrease, a decrease in gun violence, an increase, an increase in arrests, in arrests that we have to make so we can put our bad actors away. And they need to understand that this community isn't going to tolerate it. And the great thing about that is that we have people here that are speaking up, that are making a difference, and want to live a better life for themselves and their families. And we understand that, and we're prioritizing it, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, if you did not feel the passion from the chief, let me tell you how this, this leadership thing really works. When he's passionate about it, they're passionate about it. And then it transcends to our community. You now become de facto police officers, your eyes, your ears. We can't be everywhere, but you can help us out. That neighbor, that extra, that car that's not, that's not supposed to belong on that block. Neighborhood watch. That's how we reduce gun violence. But the passion that he has transcends to the individuals that, who are under him. And it transcends down to you. So thank you, chief, and more importantly, thank you, community, for helping us reduce these stats. On behalf of the mayor's office, the Aldermen and the citizens of Waukegan, we say thank you for your time, your effort, and your commitment to reducing the gun violence, not only in Waukegan, hopefully throughout this country.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Oh, you got to turn, you got to turn. One, two, three.
Good job.
Janet, I can stay right here.
You're going to stay right there? Okay. Now, the next proclamation is recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Ann M. Kylie Developmental Center. Whereas on April 4th, 1975, the Waukegan Developmental Center opened its doors to serve individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And in 1990, the facility was rededicated as the Ann M. Kylie Developmental Center in honor of Ms. Ann M. Kylie. And whereas Ms. Kylie was a trailblazer in the field of mental health, serving as the longest-tenured director of the Illinois Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities, and the first woman in the United States to lead a cabinet-level mental health agency. And whereas during her leadership, Ms. Kylie championed improvements in the quality of treatment and habilitation services, facility conditions, staffing levels, and person-centered programming to support independence and self-sufficiency for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and mental illness. And whereas the Ann M. Kylie Developmental Center continues to uphold her legacy by providing compassionate, comprehensive care and services to adults with intellectual disabilities, including those who are medically fragile or exhibit complex behavioral challenges. And whereas the center's interdisciplinary staff, including nurses, doctors, social workers, therapists, mental health technicians, and support staff, deliver a broad range of therapeutic and supportive services that includes psychiatric, psychological, medical, educational, vocational, recreational, speech, and dietary programs. And whereas today, the Kylie Center proudly serves 173 individuals, empowering them to pursue their wants, needs, and dreams while supporting their right to live in the most integrated setting appropriate to their care. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize June 2025 as the 50th anniversary year of the Ann M. Kylie Developmental Center and extend our deepest gratitude to the staff, residents, and leadership of the center for their continued commitment to excellence in service, compassion, and care, and dedication to community inclusion. Adopted the 16th day of June, 2025.
Hello, in your name. Hi Bianca, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. Well, a little history. Most people are, so when the state of Illinois decided to eliminate all of their mental health facilities in the state of Illinois, if I'm not mistaken, it was GeoCaris who fought, who fought to make sure that this facility, the Ann Kylie Center, stay open. And I'm telling you, if you have not been at that facility and walked around and seen all the healthcare personnel and how much they care about that campus, you are in for a treat. And more importantly, some of the individuals who are there, who are independently living because of the kindness and the help that you guys are giving. And now it is one of the premier facilities, healthcare facilities, in the state of Illinois. So congratulations to you, your team, and Ann Kylie Center, and all of the history that you've done in this community. We appreciate you. And by the way, a lot of their residents are not from Lake County. They're through, from the state, throughout the state of Illinois. All right, you tell the families we said hello. So on behalf of the Waukegan Mayor's Office, our Waukegan City Council, and the citizens of Waukegan, we say happy 50th anniversary. Yes?
On behalf of the Ann Kylie Center, we just want to thank the city of Waukegan for acknowledging our 50th anniversary. And we look forward to another 50 years of assisting people with developmental disabilities with obtaining their wants, needs, and dreams.
Thank you. It's nice.
You get yours?
Yes, sir.
All right. Take care. Congratulations.
We have one more. You're going to love this one, everybody.
All right. Proclamation, Recognizing the Waukegan Police Department's Support of Special Olympics Illinois. Whereas June is Special Olympics Month, a time to honor the achievements and spirit of athletes with intellectual disabilities and celebrate their accomplishments. And whereas the mission of Special Olympics Illinois is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-type sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, giving them continuing opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy, and participate in sharing of gifts, skills, and friendships. And whereas the Waukegan Police Department has long been a dedicated and enthusiastic supporter of Special Olympics Illinois, exemplifying commitment not only to public safety, but to community service, inclusion, and compassion. And whereas officers from the Waukegan Police Department's Neighborhood Policing Unit organizes and actively participates in the Law Enforcement Torch Run and other fundraising and awareness events that benefit Special Olympic athletes throughout the state, including Cop on a Rooftop. And whereas the Law Enforcement Torch Run is the single largest year-round fundraising movement for Special Olympics Illinois, raising millions of dollars and bringing widespread attention to the achievements and abilities of Special Olympic athletes. And whereas the unwavering support of the Waukegan Police Department helps promote a more inclusive society and inspires pride and unity throughout our city. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby call upon all residents to join us in applauding the Waukegan Police Department and the Neighborhood Policing Unit for their outstanding commitment to the community and their partnership through their tireless support of Special Olympic Illinois and its mission. Adopted the 16th day of June, 2025.
All right. Come on up, sir. Neighborhood policing. All right, Sarge, you got the mic.
First of all, we want to thank everybody. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I got my neighborhood policing officers, all of them except for two of them. Two are on vacation. Neuer, Harris, and Luca, and myself. I'm Sergeant Villalobos. We're part of the Neighborhood Policing Unit. We do the community events such as Touch a Truck and all these Special Olympics events, Torch Run, Cop on a Rooftop. With the community, our officers volunteer their time, donate money to help Special Olympics further events and so forth. I also have up here some officers that ran in the torch run this past Saturday, 4.1 miles. So that's pretty good. I know I didn't run it. I rode in the car. But we just want to thank you and we appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarge, and to the entire team. We truly appreciate what you're doing, stepping outside of your roles to make an impact, not just in our community, but to special folks in our community. So on behalf of Waukegan Mayor, our Waukegan City Council, and the citizens of this community, we present you with this proclamation of a big thank you from us.
Ready, one, two, three.
All right, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Pick out the dog.
Yeah. Make a motion.
We need a motion?
So move.
So move. Motion by, I'm sorry, motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman. Hayes, second by Alderman Hayes to confirm the appointment of Mackie, Waukegan Fire Department Comfort Dog. Any questions to the motion? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes. Motion passed, sir.
I need help too.
All right, are you ready? Okay, ready? All right. So, raise your right paw. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully serve the people of Waukegan with unconditional love, warm snuggles, and tailwags galore. And then I will greet every resident with a happy heart and lend a fluffy ear when someone needs a friend as the comfort dog for the city of Waukegan to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Mackie.
I would like to say something very nervously.
Ah, nah, you got to get next to her.
I would like to start by saying, oh, down, thank you to both the mayor and chief for supporting us in this endeavors. I'd like to most importantly say thank you to Canines for Comfort, who is the amazing organization that brought Mackie to the city of Waukegan. A special thank you to Becky and Tim, who were her puppy raisers, who, excuse me, selflessly raised her and trained her for the last year and a half before she came over to us. So, we are excited for what Mackie's gonna do for our department. She has a uncanny way of bringing out smiles in our guys, and we can't wait to have her out in the community and meeting all of our community members. Thank you, guys.
Well, welcome, welcome to the club. It's a good club to be in. All right, so on behalf of the Mayor's Office, all of our City Council, and the rest of the citizens of Waukegan, we say welcome to Waukegan, Illinois. You're good? All right. All right. You want some, what do you want? So, we're gonna, let's get a picture, can we get a picture with all of the pups who came in, the family in fire? Come on up with us. Yes, all the pups. Oh, wait a minute, we have to, what we got, what we gonna do? Look, look at, look at, look at the badge, we got a badge for her. Mac, all right. This what we can? Wait a minute. The Alderman might need these comfort dogs.
All right, you ready? On three, everyone say whoa. One, two, and three. Whoa.
Good job.
No. I did mine at the last minute, so. Oh goodness.
Okay, Mr. Matley, do we have the list of people talking?
Item F.
Yeah, one more item.
Oh, never mind.
There is. Item 2F, motion to confirm the appointment of Joshua D. May as Chief of Staff at a starting salary of $130,000 on Monday, June 30th. There is a motion. Okay, there's a motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Donaworth. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item 3A, audience time, Madam Clerk?
Now it's audience time. Okay, I think it's right here. So we have three speakers, Ivan, Ivan Ramirez, Rayon Edwards, and Margaret Carrasco. You have three minutes. Mr. Ivan Ramirez? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, it's gonna be tough to beat the dogs, but I'm here today to speak on behalf of American Place Casino. I'm the communication manager there. And I wanted to, I'll bring to your attention, we're gonna be doing a career expo for the first time ever Tuesday, July 8th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Now, it's not required that they attend the entire time, it's gonna be kind of an expo where people can come and go, I say please. We're gonna be having different panelist discussions throughout the event, kind of focusing to highlight, you know, hey, I started out as an entry-level dealer, I started out as a steward, now I'm a sous chef, now I'm a pit manager. We really want to highlight the different career opportunities individuals can have in the game industry and the hospitality industry as a whole. We're gonna be doing some light demonstrations, we're gonna be doing some mixology demonstrations, kitchen tours, and really a good opportunity for individuals to come in, ask a couple of questions, you know, how do I get started? Where does a career path look like? And you learn a little bit more about what it's like working at American Place Casino. We were recently rewarded Chicago Premium Stock Workplace, Daily Herald's Stock Workplace, and we offer all our individuals full benefits, 401K, pay time off, volunteer time off, venture programs, and many, many more benefits. So if possible, I'm just asking that everyone please share it with your networks, share with the community, and let's make this a great event, so then I can do it again and again. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, community, mayor, clerk, treasurer, and council. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments about the fireworks, but I'm gonna say to you, this council, and the police chief, we know they are illegal. I need y'all to be a little bit more forceful. All y'all up here say y'all love dogs. Don't y'all hear when them booms go off, all the howling them dogs do? Our seniors are scared, those babies are terrified. I don't know how they getting them here, but the dynamite is this big. I seen it yesterday, let off about eight of them all around the park. I dialed 911, it took them about 10 minutes to get there. By that time, somebody will be hurt and they're tossing them. And so when you're tossing them, if it's somebody walking in, they're not even gonna know they hit. But chief, I call you all the time, I'm still waiting on a meeting. I hear you sit up here today and you talk about all of the groups that you work with, and that's baffling to me that the biggest community advocate in Waukegan, and I'm gonna wear that title tonight, because I think I worked hard to just about that anybody can't even sit down and talk with you to see how we can do some community initiatives, to see how I can bridge my community with the local police department, because I'm the only advocate that say let's work with the police, because they're not going nowhere. Ain't no other advocate did this in the time but me. And I get beat by my community because I choose to do that, sir. Work with me. I want my community just as safe as all of y'all.
Excuse me, can you stop the clock for a second? Mr. Edwards, please, your comments to the dials, please.
Sir, I understand what you're saying, but my comments can go to y'all and this community, because I'm talking to the community.
Yes, sir.
He's part of the community. And so I want to make sure that, no. Now, let's talk about these liquor licenses, because I'm putting you Alderman's on notice. Y'all think I worked hard at the last election, you ain't seen nothing yet. Enough is enough. You got them by all of our schools. The first thing our kids see when they walk out of school is a liquor store, it's somewhere serving liquor, it's alcohol, alcohol, alcohol. Do y'all know that is the number one cause of violence? You're talking about cars running, people getting hit, they drunk. And every time we turn around, there's new liquor licenses. Now Encore got one, next to a living facility. Are y'all kidding? Do y'all not understand that PABZ is here right in Lake County? Catholic Charity, CAP, all of your resources is right here. So most of your homeless is where? You want to know how my kids getting it? All you got to do is give a homeless person a dollar, they gonna go get it, because they just want the money. So a petition is being drawn up as we speak, I just want y'all to know. I got a lot of traction on social media. So far, we got about 2,800 people talking to us about this. So we want to know what you Alderman's gonna do, because all of y'all is up on that ticket in 2027. And we working, we knocking on doors, and we mean business. The city of Waukegan's supposed to be, y'all should be talking about urban development. How do we?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, thanks, thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Yes, good evening. In life, when you want different results, you have to do things differently. So this year, Fierce is Patricius, and for those persons that are not aware, have never been to, our queen pageant is like Paris runway. We take it all the way for the girls. We have makeup artists, elegant hairdos. We teach the girls how to walk elegantly on the runway with high heels, how to sit properly, elegant gowns, and we involve the whole community, like local businesses to do their, they sponsor the hairdos. Each girl has a different hair salon, makeup artists. It's really a lot of fun, and it's good for self-esteem, something positive. We're the envy of the whole county, no one else does it like, like we do it. So this year, we decided, in light of everything going on, we want to, we thought it was necessary, for the first time ever, we are going to open it up to an entire community. That means all girls, all races, all colors, we don't care, in all of Lake County. And it's because each year, we have young ladies that contact us, and they say, you know, I would love to have the opportunity to participate, but I'm Puerto Rican. Or I'm German, whatever the case is. You know what, I think it's time, we need to take it up a level, and welcome all girls. Okay? So it's gonna be a lot of fun, because we're gonna have real diversity. And we just want to let people know that that's a change, and we think it's a good change, and we think we're gonna have a lot of fun. We think some of the girls will learn Spanish too along the way. Okay, it's not a requirement, but it'll be, it really would be a lot of fun for the girls. The next thing is that right before the election, I had submitted a FOIA request. It was actually an extensive FOIA request on George Bridges Jr. on all of the monies, PayPal checks, permits, construction of him or of his wife. And I was hoping, okay, legal counsel is here. So I got the FOIA request, and it shows for those documents, any document related to George Bridges, it was blank. Well, we know that's not the case. So, being this Waukegan, I don't need a FOIA request to get the documents. And sir, I got the documents.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the audience portion, sir.
Item 4A. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, councilman, or person wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda and voted separately. With that being said.
I'll make the motion for your consent agenda.
Okay. I'll be reading the consent agenda. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna read the items and then ask for a motion. And if there's, if you want any of those. Items to be taken off, then we'll do it by the. 4A, motion to approve regular meeting minutes from Monday, June 2nd, 2025. 4B, motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated June 13th, 2025 in a total amount of $2,135,971.06. 4C, motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated June 13th, 2025, in total amount of $324,260.06. Item 4D, motion to approve vendor payment dated June 16th, 2025 in a total amount of $3,282,773.04. Item 4E, ordinance approving the vacation of the portion of the right-of-way adjacent to the north property line of 1206 Yeoman Street, south of Glen Flora Avenue, zoning calendar V-1-25 with compensation to the city in amount of $850. Item 4F, ordinance approving variance related to a garage setback at 4386 West Forest Avenue, zoning calendar 27834G. Ordinance approving variance related to garage setbacks at 4390 West Forest Avenue, zoning calendar 2784. 4H, resolution approving the award of 2025 covert rehabilitation bid to Campanella &amp; Sons, Inc. for not to exceed an amount of $3,803,680.20. 4I, resolution approving amendment number three to the master agreement between Lake County and the city of Waukegan for a new traffic signal at Sunset in Northern. 4J, an ordinance authorizing approving the disposition of surplus property of the city of Waukegan Fire Department equipment. For K, resolution authorizing approving the purchase of computer equipment from CDW-GLLC, um, joint purchasing for amount not to exceed two hundred and five thousand dollars. Funding will be sourced from General Ledger Line 100-103-726495 and 100-103-724801. For L, resolution authorizing approving the purchase of software from United System for Itron for not to exceed amount two hundred twelve thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars. Funding will be sourced from- General Ledger Line 555-915-524801 and 555-915-026496. For M, resolution approving procurement of Open Gov permit and license cloud solutions from Carrosoft Technologies Corporation for the use of the engineering department for not to exceed an amount of seventy thousand dollars. Funding will be sourced from General Ledger Line 10910124801. For N, resolution authorizing approving the purchase of software from Open Gov for Carthage and an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and eighty-five cents. Funding will be sourced from General Ledger Line 100-190624801 and 555-915-524801. Are there any- Are there any items to be removed?
Uh, Mayor, item J.
Are there any other items? Motion, can I get a motion? Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by-
Alderman Florian.
Alderman Florian. Okay. All items will be, will be approved except for item J. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed, and carry, item J. Item J, it author- an ordinance authorizing approval of disposition of surplus property of city of Waukegan, Waukegan Fire Department. There was a, let's get a motion on the floor, then a question.
Start move.
Uh, motion by Alderman Martinez.
My second.
Second by Alderman Florian. There's a question, Alderman Guzman, you wanna know what it is, right?
No, I know exactly what it is, but, uh, they were supposed to get back to me about why are we, uh, uh, I mean, I know it's our neighbor state, but why aren't we looking for somebody in Illinois to donate this, or is there nobody else?
So we actually did not look for anybody, the company that we're, that we purchased our new system from, um, when we were talking about disposing of our current system, because it doesn't meet standards anymore, so we cannot maintain it. So he said that there's a small department up in Upper Wisconsin that they're actually using a compressor that has the old, um, uh, belt-driven drive on it, um, to, for a compressor. So, uh, he suggested, if it out possible, that we donate to them. We didn't have anybody looking, nobody around here in the state of Illinois won't pass Illinois standards, so, um, in, in, quite frankly, we did not go out to look for anybody else. So this was a perfect scenario because it's all gonna happen actually this Wednesday. New ones gonna get put in, old ones gonna go up to Wisconsin.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed, and carry, item, item five, reports and communication, monthly treasurer report, Treasurer Schwab.
Thank you, sir. Um, the April, uh, 2025, uh, monthly treasurer's report has been filed with the clerk. It's also on the city website at this time, and I've passed out physically to every one of the aldermen today. If there's any question, please call me at eight four seven, eight five six nine one five four, that's eight four seven, eight five six nine one five four. That ends my report.
Thank you, Treasurer Schwab. Item, there's no items for six, seven, eight, or, I would say nine, but I know that's not right. No, uh, no items for six, seven, and eight. Item nine, all the persons, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I wanna, uh, let the first ward know that we're still working on our lead piping project, I will keep updated, um, and I understand that project will continue on Martin Luther King in Waukegan. And I wanna thank our clergy, uh, community for all their volunteer time and service in rendering our vacation and just community, you know, dedicating yourself to the community. Also wanna thank my constituents for all your call, your texts, keeping me updated, us dialoguing about the concerns, uh, whether it's, uh, gun violence, whether it's keeping the streets clean. I wanna thank you for reaching out to me, and of course, you can reach me at two two four six zero seven eight four four five. The number again, two two four six zero seven eight four four five. And then also want to let you know on the 28th of this month, at the location of 541 Oak Street, there will be an upcoming block party. Look to see you there, come and support your community, and the time will be from 11:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. And the address again is 541 Oak Street, and there will be a block party. There will be food, games, and fun, and that's all I have for now, thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Uh, good evening, all. Just to let the second ward know that I will be having a ward meeting on June 21st, 2025, which is this Saturday. It would be from two to four in English and four to five in Spanish to discuss multiple topics. First, uh, streets that are done, that are currently in constructions, and streets that, uh, I have requested. Second, uh, improvements and enforcement of different aspects of the ward. I know, uh, we're the South Siders, I know that you're used to like, uh, um, stuff being same way for years and years and years, and it hasn't been right. You know, uh, we have to get, uh, the South Side cleaned up, it is, uh, looking up, and I'm, uh, holding accountable everybody in every aspect of level of government with Lake County, uh, and, uh, the state and everybody else, so we can improve our second ward in the South Side. Let's, let's keep up with the other wards, guys. Uh, it's no longer free for all. We're gonna discuss all that during the, uh, uh, the ward meeting. Third, uh, speed bumps, where are they at, when are they coming? Fourth, uh, the budget, would I agree with it, would I disagree with it? I know it's late, but, uh, uh, we received it and, um, I tried to go through it as much as possible, I didn't have a ward meeting beforehand. I'm, I'm hoping next, uh, budget that comes around, uh, I will have a, a ward meeting to discuss it before the vote even happens. Fifth, uh, the administration, where we're at, uh, close to sixty days, uh, what differs from the previous, uh, betters or not? Six, uh, promises, uh, that were made while I was on the trail, promises that I'm still working on, and promises that were kept. Seven, Willow Road, what is the status of the reopening and where we're at from there? Eight, uh, second and fourth ward, uh, combination ward meeting, I'm still working on that for sometime in August, uh, cookout, I'm hoping to get a couple, uh, three, a couple hours of swim time for everybody, and, uh, everybody will be invited for that. Subjects like this and more at my ward meeting again, uh, June 21st, from two to four in English and four to five in Spanish. Okay, summertime's coming around and, um, I mean, the loud music is going on and I'm getting phone calls left and right, uh, please, I understand, it's, uh, it's getting nice outside, the, the temperature's getting, uh, better, and you wanna, you know, you wanna, um, have family time or friend time. I understand that, it's, it's, it's a great time, but, you know, and not everybody appreciates, just because you like a certain kind of music, that doesn't mean somebody else does. So let's be mindful of your neighbor, they sometimes have to work third shift or second shift, sometimes they have to work Saturdays or Sundays, you know, so, I mean, it's nice to have people over, it's nice to, uh, be a family in, 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 you know, togetherness, but let's be within our own space, okay? Fireworks, fireworks has started, they are illegal in, in the state of Illinois, uh, you know, for me, I, you know, I, I have my opinions, other people have their opinions, I understand. For me, it's very patriotic because it, it's, it's in our, um, in our spa- uh, Star Spangled Banner song, uh, bombs bursting in the air, and that's what, uh, uh, reference for the fireworks are, so I understand, but I also gotta look at it the other ways, dogs, they go crazy, I know my kids' dogs go crazy, when I used to own a dog, it used to go crazy, but, so let's be respectful about other people. And hopefully, everybody has a great Fourth of July, and hope from there, thank you, have a good day.
Alderman Martinez.
All right, thank you, Council, uh, and also city clerk. First, I'd like to give thanks to, uh, Pastor Tiffany Pepper for tonight's evocation, and I just wanna remind everyone of our, um, third ward, uh, resident meeting, it will be held on Saturday, the 28th, from one to three p.m. Uh, it will be held at the Brookside Campus at 2535 Brookside. It is, it is gonna be, I, I try to, I, I try to approach it in a different manner, I, I wanted to, well, I, I, I am going to recognize two outstanding individu- uh, one outstanding individual and another business that give back to the community, especially the third ward, uh, these individuals go beyond, they are out there with the, always making our city, uh, better, and I, I, uh, I wanna commend them for it. And so I want to commend, there, there'll be two, two awards given away, one would be, I call it for the people award, and that is gonna be for our resident Maggie Powell. Most of us know Maggie Powell, she's always out there volunteering her time, she's got one heck of a testimony where, however, she started, where she's at from, where she's going now, or, uh, have, have given back to the city. So I, I wanna recognize, uh, uh, Maggie for all her efforts and her dedication, but I also wanna rec- recognize the business of, uh, of the third ward, and that's gonna go to Dripping Culture. Now, this is another, another restaurant that really goes beyond, always giving back to the community, uh, very committed, very dedicated, um, and they also have a, a great testimony, so I, I will be honoring them with a plaque, um, and just to say that there's many, many, many residents in our third ward that are outstanding citizens who've given back to, to society, to our, our community, so, and not, I, I couldn't honor anyone, uh, but to those who do, I, I hear you, and I just wanna thank you in behalf of the, uh, the constituents of the third ward, um, but that is again, gonna be held on, uh, Saturday the 28th. I will also have Senator, um, Adrian Johnson will be our guest speaker, and also different department heads that are gonna talk about the, the, the state of the state of our ward and, uh, the information that we can share with the community, so, uh, please don't, uh, miss it. We will have a sweets table and the warm beverages will be sponsored by Dripping Culture, all right? Thank you for that. And then I also want to talk about, uh, let me see here, oh, the excessive amount of, again, but piggyback, uh, to what Mr. Alderman, uh, Guzman was saying, with the excessive noise, I mean, it, it's like it's happening more often than it did last year, now I'm getting calls on weekdays, that, that hasn't happened. It is out of control, it, it is out of control, we really do something with that, uh, I know that I had emailed each and every alderman to see if they're experiencing the same setbacks that we are in the third ward with that, and I was, was looking for some feedback and, and thank God that, uh, Chief Navarro, uh, had came up with a plan. Chief Navarro, would you please come up and, and explain what the, what, what, how we're gonna approach this? He had a great idea how you explained it, so I, I just want my constituents to know. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. Okay, also, I, I wanna give up, uh, special thanks to Chris Garland, also Public Works, for the completion, the paving, the sidewalk and the curves at Leith Avenue, and also on North Martin Avenue, I've been getting, uh, a few phone calls, people thanking me, now, now the thing about is this car speeding through there, but that's something we can deal with later, but, uh, I, on behalf of the constituents, we thank you for that, for taking care of our streets, and it looks so much nicer and brighter with walking dogs there, so, but, uh, we thank you for that. And then I also want to remind the council, this is concerning the fire station on North Lewis, I know that we had brought property, and then we had talked about, uh, rebuilding it, a new fire department. I, I like to put that back on the table because that's very important, I think that now, while we haven't really talked about it, but I think that we need to open the dialogue again before we move forward, because as many of you guys know, that, that station that on North Lewis, and Chief Page, that can, 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 uh, vouch for that, it's just deplorable, some, the condition is, is to the point to where they, they need a new, the new fire department, so I just wanna put that back in your head, that maybe you can think about it and let's open the dialogue to get that fire department done in the third ward, cuz that's something that we had talked about, so I, I know we were all committed, and I just ask that you stay committed, and let's, let's, uh, talk about it. Thank you for that. And then also, let me have here, also, I also want to talk briefly about the new sidewalk. I have been working with Director Chris Garland, this is the sidewalk between Brookside and, uh, Evergreen, where a lot of the students, it is their pathway to and from school, and what happens is that a lot of times, when I drive by there, when it's raining, they have, they have to actually walk on the, on the sidewalk. So I, I, I've been working with the director, Chief Garland, and, and he, uh, promises me that it'll be done, something's gonna be done and up by the end of the summer, and I look forward for that, but I just wanted, uh, remind my residents that, uh, you know, we, we, I'm, I'm still doing my best to get that resolved, uh, hopefully, and done in time for the students to come back to school at, at the end of August. All right, okay, so also I'd like to talk about, let me see here, so student from school, progress being made, all right. Oh, again, Leith Avenue, I know that we had a, uh, uh, Neighbor Watch meeting maybe like a few months ago, and everyone was, was in agreement, we couldn't, no one was really committed to being a, a captain for the Neighbor Watch for the Leith Avenue, Street, uh, Avenue, excuse me, um, I do have a gentleman, his name is Jose Torres, I will be going to each home on Leith Avenue and that particular side of Leith Avenue, and I'll go ahead and, uh, uh, introduce him to everyone, and, uh, we'll have a, 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 a meeting at his home, but more information will be forthcoming, and these are for the Leith Avenue residents in that, on, on that side of town. Let me see here. Also, I also want to welcome again, Krabby Juice Seafood, they've already built up a great reputation, they're, but one of the premier places to go, I, I go on social media and I see the, the positive, uh, feedback that he's getting, uh, Eric is the proprietor, I, I did visit him, and we are gonna have a, a ribbon cutting ceremony, we talked about having a, a, um, a, a, a small social where we'll, we'll invite a few people and it can go live and, uh, uh, that, it'll be a, a, an event where people can taste the food, uh, but, uh, he is excited about it, and that's also in the works, so please be looking out for that. Uh, let me see here, almost done here. Okay, okay, and then also, let me see here, that's pretty much all I have. If you need to get a hold of me, my, I can reach that eight four seven three nine zero twenty-six eighty-nine. Again, please, with the noise, oh, and I know what I wanted to say, for a la, okay, I also, the, the proclam- the proclamation, proclamation tonight, I, I worked at Citi Center for fifteen years, and I, and that was very rewarding, so I- So I, I commend Kylie Center for fifty years, and also the safe, there's a lot of, uh, good stuff coming out of Waukegan. I'm so proud that, uh, that it's located here, and that we all, we all support them. And that's all about giving back to the community. You know, we are a great big melting pot, and we have to look out for each other. You know, we are, we need to accentuate the positive things that we do in Waukegan, not always the negative. But again, I will say that discipline begins in, at, at home, in that living room. All right, so can't blame everything on everyone. Uh, with that being said, uh, just ask that you be safe, be mindful, and let's all be a great neighbor. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Alderman Felix.
Thank you. I just wanna go over a few things over the past weekend and a couple of weeks. Uh, I did attend a ribbon cutting for a food truck that opened in our downtown. They're gonna be primarily in our downtown per, um, per the owner, per, uh, Tojitos Al Alegre. They're gonna focus on, uh, Sinaloa-style seafood creations. I'm happy that we're having, uh, food trucks open up in our, and want to open up in our city. And I'm pretty sure they can see how supportive we are in promoting and, um, you know, welcoming them into our city. So congratulations to them in opening their food truck in their downtown. I did also attend a ribbon cutting, uh, for the, uh, Waukegan Library, where we were able to use a, a specific grant for public arts to, um, do a, to pay an artist, to have an artist do a mural in our, in our library. You can see that, uh, catch that off the Martin Luther King Junior Avenue. It's a great painting, painting, and it was done by, uh, artist, uh, Burke Morrell. A Waukegan native, and his, uh, he has a good history in our, in our, in our city. He's no longer in Waukegan, but he was born in Waukegan, has a lot of family in our, in our city. I believe his grandfather was also a Fourth Ward Alderman, so that was pretty cool to, uh, to hear some history. So congratulations to him, and thank you, uh, Burke, for, uh, providing us with a great art. Uh, Juneteenth Parade, the twenty-first, is gonna be in the Fourth Ward. Uh, it's been, been a long time coming. I'm happy to see something like this happening in, in our community. And, uh, Waukegan is definitely the right place to do this. We're a melting pot. Um, the beach is also now open, you know, we have a lot of things going on. I welcome our residents to join, to come to our beach, you know, a lot of people, some people don't go to our beach. Uh, take advantage of our beach. If you have your city sticker, there is no charge. If you don't have, there is some charge, but enjoy it. We, we're open. We're, have a limited time here. We have a short summer, so enjoy our city and enjoy our beach. Uh, we do have free yoga, brought, brought to you by, uh, Waukegan Park District. It is from eight, eight A. M. to nine A. M. That's on Saturdays. So welcome people to do free yoga in our beach. And also, uh, Zumba on the beach from nine to nine forty-five, brought to you by the Energy Fire Fitness. Also free, uh, in our beach, so welcome people to take, take advantage. It's a good group. It's a large group, having fun and taking advantage of our, of our beach. I met with our Code Compliance Officer, Enforcement Officer, Denny. Uh, got to spot, talk to him. Before, for whatever reason, we didn't really communicate well. But, you know, now we're having more, more communication, way, I'm able to communicate more with him. And he has, uh, what the city needs. You know, he's, uh, focused on customer service and not necessarily penalizing people, but giving people a chance and gi- giving them, uh, a chance to fix what's going on, what's, you know, their, their violations. So got to talk to him, and he's, you know, he has a list of things that need to be ta- uh, looked at. But, uh, of course, if you guys reach out to me, we can make it a priority. But definitely have a good, good, good team, and, you know, reach out to Denny. I put his information on my socia's, on how to reach him as well. You don't always have to reach me directly. You can always reach out to our Code Enforcement Officer, but, you know, please reach out to me as well. Uh, also, I will share Yvonne's information regarding the American Place Casino, uh, the Career Expo. He forwarded me the information. I'll share that on my socia's as well. I met with Public Works as well, with the team. Um, we have a great team. Also, they also have a list of, of, uh, things that need to be taken care of. And of course, you know, uh, they're working hard every day to get through those lists. But also, you know, you can reach out to me, and I can also forward them an email or get in communication, depending on the severity of the issues. Um, I also have a website I'm working on now. Um, I will have a newsletter of, after every meeting, I'm gonna, uh, go over of what we voted on and things, things like that. And also, on my website, I'm gonna have, on projects that I'm working on, have worked on, uh, ordinances that I've worked on, whether they passed or not, and, uh, current, uh, projects. Uh, I wanna say, uh, thank you, Diane, for, uh, bringing up Post Marketplace Cafe. I did speak to the manager over there, and we went over the parking, there, uh, some other, um, concerns in terms of, uh, offloading and stuff like that. So I'll be working with them and see, you know, working with our team, see what we can do for, in terms of parking, and making it easier for, for them as a business. They wanna touch on the, last thing I wanna touch on, resources in our city. We have tons and tons of resources, tons, you know. And I think maybe a conversation we can all have, 'cause, um, and I don't wanna, this is just a conversation to our P. R. team. Um, and maybe we can have it all together, 'cause, uh, you know, Waukegan has Explore Waukegan. We have Waukegan Beach. We have, you know, certain, certain websites that focus on certain things. Maybe we can have another little focus on Waukegan Helps. Where we help our, our partners in their city promote all the resources we have. We have a diverse, full of resources in our city to help people out. I think a major problem, not a problem, but a shortfall is that they don't have enough people going to them. So I think maybe that's something we can have as a city. We can have focus on promoting our resources in our city. And that's pretty much it. And, uh, my, you can re-reach me at eight four seven three nine zero two six nine three. You can also email me, uh, preferred texts, but you can always leave me a voice message. And lastly, let's move Waukegan forward. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanna thank a few, um, people tonight. Uh, Public Works Director, Mr. Chris Garland, and Supervisor Alonso Jinkins. Um, sometimes I know people don't get the thanks that they need or that they deserve. But every time I get a thank you from a residence, I wanna pass it on to you because you all are the ones that are actually getting the job done. So I appreciate that, and I wanted to reach out to you and let you know. My Neighborhood Policing Officer, Mr. Harris, Christopher Harris, another Chris. Um, I reached out to him last week, and I was having an issue with a barking dog consistently. And so, um, I reached out to him and got a text message today that the issue has quieted down for now. So hopefully, we have, um, touched on what the problem is, and they can, uh, work with the neighbors to keep the dog from barking constantly. And then also, um, Code Compliance. I was on my way downtown one day last week, and I got around to here on Grand Avenue in the bend. And I saw a gentleman outside of his car, Code Officer, had the orange cones up, and a garbage can had dumped over into the street, and he was picking it up. So I said, hmm, that was nice, that officer to stop in. And unbeknownst to me, I didn't even know it was not his area to take care of. So when I came down last week, I thanked, um, the Supervisor, Mr. Miguel. I told him I didn't know who the officer, Code Officer was, but I wanted to thank him for stopping to make sure that garbage was not in the street where cars come around that bend. And, um, even though coming around that bend sometime, even with the cones, uh, it might have not been the safest thing to do, but I'm glad he had those cones out there so people could see him getting that garbage up. So when I went to the office to thank, uh, Miguel, the Supervisor, I told him I didn't know who the Code Officer was. I didn't know. But, uh, the Code Officer happened to be sitting in the office, and I found out who it was, um, Christopher Arty. So he said that he actually works out in the Ninth Ward, but he happened to be coming through there and saw that the garbage can had been dumped over and picked it up. So it's the things that you do when you don't think people are looking, but there are people watching what you do. So I wanted to really thank him, uh, for doing that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, in the sixth, well, first let me say, Alderman Newsom, you're absolutely right. It's, it's the small things that really count, and sometimes it's just a matter of doing a little extra, a little bit more, that'll make a big difference, and so I'm glad you're recognizing, uh, was his name, Christopher Harding?
Harding.
Arty, good, thank you very much. All right. In the Sixth Ward, excuse me. Uh, wanna report on, uh, some of the re- street resurfacing that's underway in the eighteen-hundred and nineteen-hundred blocks of both Walnut and Linden. So that's a total of four blocks there. We're also resurfacing the six-hundred block of Porter. Uh, those are in process. Um, coming up, we'll be doing Ridgeland Avenue between North and County Streets. Be North Avenue and County. Uh, and then we'll be doing Chestnut and Poplar between Ridgeland and Glen Flor. So those are coming up, uh, in the next several weeks. Um, yesterday, I was down at the beach, and I was kinda talking with Sergeant Villalobos, Officer Walker, and Officer McPally, and they kinda, you know, waving at the people who were coming in. But there was a gentleman, two gentlemen, that came as they were leaving the beach, and they, they stopped, and they made a point of commenting on how nice the beach was. Beautiful, it's beautiful, and they were very effusive in their appreciation of, uh, of the beach. So I'd like to recognize Lisa May and her team for what they've done down there, and, and everyone who's, um, playing a role and making an effort to keep the beach clean and safe. And, and that's one of the things that I was talking with the officers about, Chief, is, uh, some of the, you know, criminal conduct and what levels. So it's, it's, there's great reduction, right? They're, they're, they're having an impact. Their presence is having an impact. Uh, I understand there was a gun pulled off of the beach, uh, some guys down there shooting a rap video or something recently. So we're having an impact, and we're working diligently to keep Waukegan safer and more prosperous. So thank you all very much. That's what I have. Good night.
Alderman Donaworth.
Thank you. Uh, yes, again, uh, I would also like to thank Chris Garland and, you know, the, his, his group out there. I had three or four people calling me in the last couple of weeks. And, uh, the things weren't any real big deals, but, but they were able to take care of them and help them out. And they had already been out in the areas on a couple of these people, people's houses, were able to, uh, get permission to go on their property to cut some trees down. That was our city tree on, on the top of their house, so they were able to take, take care of that. And then also, these people just commended the city, all the workers that had come out, all the people that they had spoken to, uh, that they did an excellent job, very professional. And of course, I relayed that on, and I think you and Alonso would probably advise them of that. Um, basically, we need to keep our eyes open in the, in the neighborhoods again. I was just, uh, notified, um, earlier today that, um, a car was stolen out of the driveway right in front of, uh, Ballantyne and Lewis Avenue. She, uh, left the keys in the car, and it was in her driveway, and she was right in her driveway. She just said she walked, walked inside and came out, and, and there it was gone. And she's hoping to find it, hope, hope it doesn't get wrecked or anything, or anything like that. But, uh, she called the police, and she did make a police report, so, you know, that's on file. And then basically, you know, just keep your eyes open. If you see something that doesn't look right, call the police. I mean, that's what they're there for. And then, um, other than that, everything seems to be going halfway decent in the ward. And, uh, people are calling, and we're able to answer questions and all that stuff. And, you know, my contact with the city always gets the questions answered, and I'm able to get back to the people as quickly as possible. This is one of the best things we've ever had here. We always get a response and always get a quick response. And if there's anything to be taken care of, it is taken care of by all departments. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, it's been a while since I spoke out about our hospital. Um, there's still much to be concerned about there. Um, I just checked, and their property taxes still remain unpaid for last year and the first installment for this year, which means over one million dollars has not been paid to our Waukegan School District. Several hundred thousand dollars has not been paid to the city as our share of their taxes. And of course, other taxing bodies go without as well, the Park District, the County, et cetera. This is not acceptable, in my opinion. I am not a fan of a for-profit hospital in our community, but here we are. This is what we have. And one of the responsibilities of a for-profit business is to pay property taxes, just like our residents. The hospital also owes the city over two hundred thousand dollars for water. And I've seen people asking on social media, well, why isn't their water shut off? Well, legally, we can't shut off a hospital's water, and I think they know that, so I think it's part of the game. Um, I know the previous administration had started, uh, legal proceedings against the hospital to try to collect this money. I think we should continue to do that. Um, I know ComEd had to sue them to collect about eight hundred thousand dollars that they were owed. Um, social media is still filled with stories about poor care and unsafe conditions. They've had two patients die under suspicious circumstances. Um, seriously, I think our community deserves better. They keep saying they are struggling because we have too many uninsured and underinsured, but we're not the only community in the country or the states that has a working-class constituency. Um, something needs to be done. People need to be held accountable. I realize we, as a city, don't control them. We don't license them. But this affects our residents every day, and we need to stay on top of this and make sure we hold their feet. Uh, make sure we hold their feet to the fire. Um, the second thing I wanna talk about is, um, it's, it's come to my attention now, the way nightclub endorsements work is anything, any endorsement can be given by the, the mayor as liquor commissioner. And one of the first he issued was last week for Encore Banquets at Midlane in my ward. Uh, this establishment came to City Council last year asking for a nightclub endorsement. Um, my residents overwhelmingly did not a white, did not want a nightclub there due to the history of a previous nightclub. There was a murder in a parking lot, uh, the fact that it's nestled in a neighborhood, and we had approved an assisted-living facility on the same prof- property as Mr. Edwards alluded to earlier. And my fellow Aldermen agreed it was not an appropriate fit. And now, without any input from City Council, they have a nightclub endorsement. I'm curious what problem we're trying to solve by creating more nightclubs. Um, we don't have the best history where nightclubs are concerned. I know, Mayor, I've heard you talk about the four-year vacation you took for the last four years. A lot happened in those four years. Um, we had a murder at Stretches on Christmas Eve. Um, numerous, numerous problems, uh, place here downtown, including a guy with a machine gun on Genesee Street, right across from the theater. A shooting at four o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, which I believe, Mr. Edwards, you were there, down here when C. L. C. building got shot. Um, a young sailor from Great Lakes was found dead at the lakefront after being ushered out of Ibiza, which has now been closed down. Um, in general, Waukegan doesn't, has a, a reputation it doesn't deserve in many ways. I see about forty people a day from Waukegan and surrounding communities, and many times I have to correct misinformation. One woman said to me once, well, someone gets shot and killed in Waukegan every day. I'm like, no, they don't. But in this instance, I believe, when it comes to nightclubs, we have a problem. Um, many times we sit here and listen to our residents yell at us about creating too many liquor licenses, as we did tonight. Um, I believe we have over two hundred. Um, now will we have two hundred nightclubs? Um, I understand anyone with a liquor license can apply for a nightclub endorsement. Um, I had spoken briefly with Alderman Newsom last week during our briefing with, um, Mr. Moisio, and I said I believed it was something that should be the decision of the council. And Alderman Newsom said that she thought that it could become politi- political if it comes to the council. And, and that's true, but there's nine of us. And I believe if it only goes through one person, there's much more chance of a problem than there is if it comes through all of us. Um, I understand that by Illinois statute, the mayor is the liquor commissioner. I understand that by Illinois statute, the mayor is the liquor commissioner, but I believe this is a bad arrangement. I looked it up because I had heard Zion has a liquor commission. So they have three commissioners from the community, and the mayor chairs the commission. So there's at least some input from the community. I don't believe a nightclub should be able to be put into any establishment that has a liquor license without some input from the Aldermen. We're the ones that are going to get the calls about the loud noise, Alderman Martinez, about drunken behavior, about, we're the ones that get the calls. But if we have no say in who gets them, that doesn't seem fair to me. I think we should consider forming a commission to try to take some of the politics out of it. I just don't think this is the way we rebuild Waukegan. I know that's your goal, Mayor. I support rebuilding our city, but I don't think we do it by creating nightclubs anywhere and everywhere.
Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Guzman, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed and carried. Thank you. Happy Fourth of July, everybody.